I'd like to call to order this public work session of the Mawa Board of Education for May 22nd, 2019. Would you please take a roll call?
Mr. Sacco.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Mr. Kismarski.
Here.
Ms. Conoco.
Here.
Dr. Morthee.
Here.
Mr. Wendrickowitz.
Present.
And Ms. Barron.
Here. Adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on April 10th on May 22nd, 2019 in the administrative offices at 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Mr. De Silva, would you please leave some...
I would love to.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to recess to executive session? Mr. Kismarski seconded by Mr. Wendrickowitz. We should be gone about 15 minutes, for your patience. May I have a motion to reconvene to public session? Ms. Sacco, seconded by Mr. Kismarski. Thank you.
We're missing one.
Oh.
We can continue.
Yeah, we can continue. Prima said she'd be back shortly. Agenda questions, yeah. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public? Mr. Gallo, seconded by Mr. Copeland.
Natalie Slockbauer, 43 Thunderhead Place, two questions. Seventeen G rejection of bid. So I think, is this the second rejection, correct? Yes. So what did the bids come in at?
There was the base bid as well as alternate bids that were part of this contract, or part of this bid. The low bid for both the base and the two alternates came in just under $700,000.
Okay. And then the second one is seventeen B, courses of study. Could you give a brief synopsis of the description of the new courses of study for Rampar Ridge?
Do you know what? That's a great question. Mrs. Slockbauer, and I'll tell you what I'd like to do, actually, Mr. Gallo referenced that before. I'd like to work with Dr. Dittoro at a future meeting so that we can prepare. I don't want to do it off the cuff.
Okay.
Because so much work and so much time has been used by, taken by our administrators that we will, we will report on that on a future meeting so that we make sure that it's comprehensive and perfect.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Tricia Dubois. I'm a parent at Lenape Meadows. My address is 3509 Woodier Court. I wanted to comment on eighteen E, the resignation of Dana Grisback, who is a kindergarten teacher at Lenape Meadows. Thirteen years, tenured teacher. You know, she's a, you know, a name on a piece of paper, but I really want everybody to know that she's much more than that. She's a phenomenal teacher and she's a real loss to our students. She had both of my boys at the same time. And some of you are my boys. I know the principal, the assistant principal here. But she is a phenomenal teacher and she was an asset to the district and it is a true loss and I would just note that publicly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
May I ask you something?
Yes.
Mrs. Slockbauer, my error. Dr. Dittoro reported on that last week at a board meeting. Dr. Morthee had asked that there was just an understanding of what all those courses looked like when we were reporting about the instructional committee meeting, so that I ask if you would kindly just perhaps look back on the video. Were you here at the last meeting?
Uh...
If you weren't, I'm saying we have hours up on our website that perhaps you can refer to that because Dr. Dittoro did do that.
I know, I know you touched on, I know you touched on wearable technology.
He actually went through a number of the different courses and who was responsible for it.
I'll go back over.
If you would be kind enough to do that because I didn't recall that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to close the meeting to the public? Mr. Gallo, again, seconded by Mr. Copeland. Thank you. Dr. Shown, do you have a report for us this evening?
I do. I just have a couple of introductions, if I may. There are two resolutions that are on the agenda this evening. One is a resolution and my recommendation for a new principal of JK beginning in July, Dr. Billy Bowie. And the second is a recommendation for a supervisor of technology integration. So we can do one of two things. I can either do an intro right now, just so you're aware and have some background para voting. Would that be okay with you?
Yes.
Hate to make you do this, but you've got to do a little bit of a King Wave, Dr. Bowie, if you just let everybody know who you are. I'm not going to call you that. All right? Excellent. Excellent. Just to give, for the purposes of a background, our central office team reviewed over 90 resumes for the principal position at Joyce Kilmer. Fifteen candidates were brought in for interviews with central office staff who all came to us with administrative experience. Five finalists were brought to the panel of administrators, teachers, and a parent from Joyce Kilmer School. Unanimously, all panelists selected Dr. Bowie as their number one candidate. Dr. Bowie has earned his bachelor's degree in business administration and computer information systems, his master's degree in educational leadership, and has earned his doctoral degree from Seton Hall University in educational leadership, management, policy, with a concentration in K-12 administration. After speaking with Dr. Bowie's references, he is characterized as a superstar with philosophical, knowledgeable, and visionary who inspires teachers and has great ideas. We are proud to recommend Dr. Bowie as the principal of JK. So that resolution will be coming up. Don't leave yet. All right. The second recommendation on the agenda worthy of note this evening is our supervisor of technology integration. Unfortunately, Ms. Davis cannot be with us this evening. She had a prior commitment, but she will join us for the June 12th meeting. That's assuming that you approve her as the next supervisor, otherwise she won't be here. Our central office team reviewed 75 resumes for this position. Fifteen candidates were brought to interviews with the central office. Five finalists were brought to a panel of administrators and teachers. Two candidates were recommended to meet with central office staff for a final round of interviews. And Mrs. Ruth Davis is being recommended to you this evening for appointment. After speaking with references, Ms. Davis is characterized as, we went from superstar to rock star.
Rock star.
Who is personable, sociable, and knowledgeable in her work with teachers, K-12, as her current position is as a tech integration specialist with the Roxbury Schools. Before that, she served as a teacher of technology. We look forward to working with Ms. Davis as she joins our supervisor team. Those are my recommendations for this evening.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kyle, you have a report for us this evening.
Yes, just a report on the steam addition. Steam addition is getting closer to completion as each week goes by and our construction team has been working tirelessly during the final phase of construction. Ceiling and wall peating is complete. Tiling for bathrooms is complete. The suspended ceiling grid is installed. Door and window frames are installed. Windows and doors are being installed as they arrive. Data wires are being run. Case work is on site and mechanical units are in place and being connected. Next week, the galley curtain wall is expected to arrive. Site work will resume and case work will be installed in the roofs. As reported at the last meeting, we have adjusted the date for substantial completion to June 21st and we look forward to the classes in September.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Mr. Fair.
Yes.
Do something for us this evening.
Yes, I have three retirements to announce, eighteen A, B, and C. We'll start with Mr. Ed Ruthberg, who's dedicated 26 years of his professional teaching career educating sixth grade students in mathematics at Rampar Ridge Middle School. Mr. Ruthberg was one of the original organizers of the sixth grade Frost Valley trip and has served in the capacity of a team leader for 20 years. Always willing to go the extra mile for students, Mr. Ruthberg is known to give his lunch period to work with any students who have needed assistance. Mr. Ruthberg will be remembered for his love of mathematics, but also, and even more importantly, for his deep dedication to education for the whole child. And speaking with Mr. Ruthberg recently, he shared that over the course of his career, he has always taught students before he has taught math. We wish Mr. Ruthberg the very best. Mrs. Ramirez is our retirement for eighteen B. She's been a secretary for our high school library for the last 27 years. Sue is known to be skilled, caring, and easily accessible to both students and staff alike. She is always eager to facilitate any request in any way she can to anyone using the library. Mrs. Ramirez has shown the ability to be flexible and adapt to changing circumstances as they occur. She is capable of maintaining control of a large group of students in the library at one time. In particular, Sue has established a worthy connection with our students as she attends most high school district and township events. We wish Sue also nothing but happiness in her retirement. And lastly, eighteen C, Michelle Doc. She has served Mawa Township Public Schools for over 18 years. In her capacity as an instructional para, Michelle has developed a strong personal relationship with her cooperating teacher, the students, and building administration at Lenape Meadows School. Michelle's dedication and reliability has been invaluable throughout each school year. She takes her job of supporting students and their environment very seriously. Not only does Michelle support students in the classroom, she also cares for them in being transported home as a bus attendant. Michelle has done so much for Lenape Meadows community and will be missed. Lenape Meadows asks for us to highlight to Ms. Doc that their door is always open for a visit. Best wishes and happy retirement to Michelle as well.
Just one additional, I got so caught up in recommending great people. The Mawa School Foundation run this weekend was outstanding. We didn't have dialed in a better day. The coordination of efforts internally with our staff here, but most importantly with Jamie Brisby and Michelle Kaplan. They just have made this event once again one to remember. It was great to see the community there. Young people, alumni, just babies, dogs. I don't know about that, but they were there. But it was, it was really awesome and it was, it was a very proud moment for Mawa and the fact that we brought it back to our campus is something that I always hope we maintain. It was great.
Okay, my report for this evening. My report, Mawa High School was selected the 2019 Best High School Silver by U.S. News and World Report. So very proud of that. And that Mawa High School was ranked 39 out of 422 of New Jersey Charter and Public High Schools and 847 nationally out of 21,000 eligible Charter and Public High Schools in 50 states with the designation of silver. So congratulations to us. I also do want to let everybody know that this evening there is a fundraiser for the class of 2019 at Brady's in Ramsey and it's from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. So after the board meeting.
10:00.
7:00 to 10:00, sorry, 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. After the board meeting, if you're interested in helping out and helping out the class of 2019, please head on over there. That's all I have for this evening. Board committee reports. Do you have any board committee reports tonight?
On seventeen X and Y for policy committee, we have 33 first readings of policies and regulations and 21 policies and regulations up for second reading and adoption. So the policy committee has been a little busy and will be here tomorrow morning at 8:00.
8:15.
Eight, well, 8:15, right, 8:15. So if anybody wants to join in the fun, that's where we'll be.
Technology committee, have a preview of the device and the presentation will be given on...
June 12th.
June 12th. We are at the, at the moment where I think we're pretty much there to roll this thing out. It's very exciting. The presentation looks good. All the hard work that's happened over the past two years is finally all coming together. So look forward to June 12th and everyone can see what's about to happen.
Thank you.
I know, I even got to hand it back. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Wendrickowitz.
The Community Relations Committee, a few members have come and will help me pass out the postcards. Each board member has one in front of them. We've passed out about 900 of these and have been well received by the community. What sort of took me aback was last night with the Simply Strings. I said, "Oh, it'll be a small, quick meeting." There were hundreds of kids there. Some program we have is Simply Strings and the parents, all of those who came to have come to these various concerts have been very receptive and excited about our building out there and appreciative of the work we're doing. That's all for now.
Thank you very much. Any other... Yes, Mr. Gallo.
Two items. For negotiations, we continue making positive progress towards ratification of a new follow-on agreement to be in place hopefully July, July 1st. And Finance Facilities Committee, prior to tonight's meeting, Dawn Utel and Dr. Shown and Kyle and Greg Romero were kind enough to give us a tour of Lenape Meadows where we saw the chicks and, and the second floor, which had been so mysterious to Mr. De Silva for all these years. And thank you very much for allowing us to come to your school. And I also draw your attention to item seventeen F, which is the sugared services agreement with the township for the construction of a traffic light at the Mawa High School JK driveway entrance. Thank you township for, you'll be voting on this tomorrow. We'll be ahead of you on this one. But thank you for, to the township for your support on this project.
Thank you very much. Any other reports? Okay, do you have any board member remarks at this time? Yes, Mr. Wendrickowitz.
Tomorrow at 3:00, the JK will officially open, reopen the pathway between the library and JK. So if you can make it, please get there. It's a, it's a big deal for kids. You had mentioned something else. Oh, in my experiences of visiting the HSO, they are very excited about that traffic light to a person. They think it's great that it's finally coming because they had some interesting experiences at that intersection. Now, on May 3rd to 5th, I spent a weekend at a leadership conference. I can't say enough that I really think you all should make an attempt to go there. This is like the master's program. You had board better, new board member sessions. This is the master's program. You get there, it starts at 5:30 the first night, it went to 9:30. The second day, we started at 7:30, ended at, ended at 9:15. The third day, we started at 7:15 and went to 12:00. I mean, it just blew my nap. I had no nap. And, but you do learn a lot. It's well worth going. I'm notorious for taking a nap every day. I can't say enough, this will really make you much better board members than you are now. There's a lot of things I learned and I've been doing for 30 years. It's going to probably happen again next year. It had been a hiatus for four years with the lack of money, but it was, there were 100 board members there. It was well received, great time for networking, and I don't mean the bars, because they were all too tired. At the end of the evening, they went to their rooms and their bed.
Where did it take place?
It took place at the Forestall Conference Center. Great accommodations. They had, they had breaks every two hours for lasting for 15 minutes, but that took the time to get from point A to point B. But really, if you can go, you must go to this thing and you'll learn a lot. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sponsored by the school boards?
Yes.
Any other remarks on agenda items?
I've got a couple of quick things. Last Wednesday, the 15th, a bunch of us went to the Camp Acorn Tricky Tray. I want to congratulate Ms. Carisi for orchestrating that whole thing again. I mean, if you've never been to the event, it's tremendous. The, just collecting all those baskets, my hat's off, that way. So I, we were there with the Kismarskis and the Gallows and we got to help Linda carry out her winnings at the end of the night.
Linda was a two-time winner.
Yep.
Well, two times, but three years in a row.
She won my ice cream machine.
That's right. So congratulations to Ms. Carisi. Just to echo the, the Schools Foundation run, awesome day and Jamie and Michelle did an awesome job. That event also keeps getting bigger every year and there's a lot of coordination that goes into making that happen. And they and their whole team did a, did a great job, once again. And to echo Ms. Barron's sentiments on the, the outstanding rankings recently, I'd like to congratulate our teaching staff, our administrators, principals, support staff. The amount of work that goes into making this district what it is is really tremendous. And all those people that are in the classrooms every day with the kids, supporting the people that are in the classrooms every day, really, I mean, hats off to, to every one of our staff. Super, super job.
I'd just like to say, congratulations to all the retirees and especially to Mr. Ruthberg, who my son had and he really, really helped a lot because my son is not a math kid. So, thank you and good luck to them all.
I just want to point out seventeen I, J, and K, the school's security vestibules at Petsy Ross, Rampar Ridge, and George Washington. You know, these, these are projects that are born out of an issue that occurred well over a year ago. And, and there was such a demand for things to be done and we've been working on it for over a year. And we've gone through countless designs and countless, you know, back and forth with the architect to get it just right. Because, you know, once again, school security is incredibly important, but you also want to make sure you get it right and you get it right the first time and the only time you want to do this. It's unfortunate that we have to do it, but I'm really happy that these schools will get these vestibules as well in the long term as time has come.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kim?
Yes.
I wanted to focus, highlight seventeen E. I want to thank the Finance and Facilities Committee for, and the administration for investigating the stop-arm cameras. And thank you to the community who brought it to our attention and I'm very happy to be voting for this tonight. The safety of our kids, obviously, are number one priority on the buses as well as in the schools. So hopefully this will, this will help.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to take old business. We have a, thank you, Mr. Wendrickowitz, seconded by Mr. Gallo. I've got sixteen A and B. Okay. Take a roll call, please.
Ms. Sacco.
Yes.
Ms. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Dr. Morthee.
I abstain on A and yes for B.
Mr. Wendrickowitz.
Yes.
And Ms. Barron.
Yes. Now I'd like to move seventeen A through DD. May I have a motion to proceed? Mr. Wendrickowitz, seconded by Mr. Kismarski. Do you have any questions, comments on any of the items? I know we've commented on a lot of the items thus far. I think we're good to go. Okay. Take a roll call, please.
Ms. Sacco.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes, except on seventeen A, I will be abstaining from check number 095005.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes, but I'll be abstaining on check 095051.
Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Dr. Morthee.
Yes.
Mr. Wendrickowitz.
Yes.
And Ms. Barron.
Yes. And I'd like to take new business, eighteen A through YY. May I have a motion to proceed? Mr. Wendrickowitz, seconded by Ms. Conoco. Do you have any comments on these items?
Just a quick question. So with these hires, how close are we to being fully staffed for next year?
We're, we're all staffed except for one position.
That's awesome.
That is awesome to Mr. Fair.
And thank you to all the, I mean, I'm happy all the administrators are here. Supervisors are not because they're at a retirement dinner, but they have been very helpful in terms of expediting so that we can get the best talent here sooner before anyone else grabs them. So we're happy.
It was a teamwork.
You're done for the rest of the year, right?
We have one.
No, I mean, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's it. That's it.
Kim.
Thank you, Dennis.
On seventeen WW, I just want to thank all the volunteers for volunteering their time to help Lenape.
Okay, do you take a roll call, please?
Ms. Sacco.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Dr. Morthee.
Yes.
Mr. Wendrickowitz.
Yes.
And Ms. Barron.
Yes.
Dr. Bowie, the administrators are here this evening for you and a congratulations.
You can give us a few words.
Mike, don't do that.
I'm so excited to come. You know, the things that you guys have gone on, I think beyond being a contributor, just to be a part of this team, I mean, who's here?
For you.
And it's big. That matters. Even when I spoke to Dr. Shown, I just said, "Listen, I want to be here because you've demonstrated you want me and I want you and I'm excited about where you're going." So I definitely can help with that, my experience. You'll see. I told her, "I'm going to make her proud."
That's exactly what he said.
Thank you very much.
All right, all right.
You think so?
Yes.
Dennis is saying you guys should all go. Families, you're here for Dr. Bowie and that's wonderful. You can't go, Dr. Bowie.
Thanks, everybody, for coming.
Thank you, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for your support.
Rick's going to talk to him.
Questions and comments? So now this, this section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. May I have a motion to open to the public? Mr. Copeland, seconded by Mr. De Silva.
Hello, Ann Pauly, 86 West Preston Avenue. And I just want to say, I know how busy you guys are. There's a lot of amazing stuff happening. Thank you for keeping the playground stuff moving forward. I'm really looking forward to next month and hopefully hearing some great news. Since you weren't being copied on the petition, I brought a hard copy. Some odd things came up. A lot of Mawa residents were showing up not as Mawa residents, so I marked the ones I knew.
Thank you.
There's 247 Mawa residents that I counted that are all hoping we're going to get rid of the rubber tire chips and move to the wood chips. And I don't expect you all to have read it, but earlier today I emailed you about...
I want to thank you for that. Thank you very much.
...what happened in DC and hope that we can be proactive and really looking forward to June. We do have a lot of parents here tonight who are concerned. I don't know if everybody wants to speak. Maybe if you're here, if you want to just raise your hand and let her know you're concerned about the mulch that your kids are going to be playing on next year. And again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Evelyn Sockbauer, 43 Thunderhead Place. Just had a quick question because it got me thinking. So I actually went down and walked around Lenape because my children didn't go there, so I kind of checked out the playground area. But my son, when he was in the second grade during a Cub Scout thing, he ended up coming off the top of the slide there and broke his arm and went out with, you know, the whole thing in the ambulance. Is there a life, like, you know, the fields, is there a life expectancy for those rubberized turf, you know, mats, turfs, what turf, whatever it's called underneath the playground? And is that something that maybe needs to be looked at? Because...
Are you referring to the area that's underneath the current playground?
Under the playgrounds down there. They're all that rubberized stuff. I don't know how long it's been.
That's called a boarding place. Seventeen years, two thousand and two is when it was built.
Well, that's when it, yeah, so that's what I kind of thought. So I wasn't sure. It may be something you want to look at. Is there a, you know, a life expectancy? Does it deteriorate? Is it not as, you know, durable? You know, won't protect the kids as much?
We're in the process of doing an analysis of all different types of playground surfaces. Mr. Gallo was kind enough to put together a matrix that's easy enough for us to be able to work through as we research and gather information so that the Facilities Committee can make an informed decision as they promised they would in June. And report on it then, but they need to have it for comparison purposes. And one of those comparisons will be the things that you're talking about right now. We're researching that for them.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And for the record, I was one of the den leaders that night. I remember it well. I remember how it was yesterday. I'd be so scared of my life.
I was calm. You could just catch him.
Four twenty feet right off the top.
Good evening.
There's a coach just going by right there.
I want to echo what Ms. Bowley said and say thank you to all the volunteers for your time.
Oh, maybe, yes, your name and address, please.
Ann Marie Amizy's, M.E.I.Z.Y.S., Eden Chapel Road.
Thank you.
I want to echo what Ms. Bowley said and say thank you to those of you who are volunteers because I know we're all busy, most of you.
That's all of us.
So, thank you. I did send an email a while back and I'm hoping you all read it, regarding litigation in northern New Jersey of green church. I know that case has now been dismissed. And I did hear from Mr. Gallo, thank you for your response about looking at whether or not you are in compliance with the regulatory scheme. And that's all well and good, but I would hope that we can go beyond what is regulatory and just think about common sense approaches to what might be healthy or unhealthy. For example, let's see, coal ash. That's something that I don't think anyone can dispute, is made up of harmful ingredients, yet because it is not regulated, it makes its way into lots of different products. People are aware of it. The case in Englewood that was recently dismissed was dismissed because the plaintiffs did not have an expert that linked the mulch to the contamination. There's a couple of reasons for that. Well, there's a couple of reasons why they had, why that was not the case. Number one, it could have been that this was a small group funding their own litigation against really an insurance defense firm that's well-funded. You know, that could be the first explanation for this. And I just want the board to think bigger than just necessarily, well, they're okay, so therefore we're okay. I would just have you think about things like baby powder. And how many of you maybe use baby powder on your children or on yourselves? And now you might give pause to the fact that baby powder is still legal, yet there's a lot of information out there. There's actually verdicts against Johnson and Johnson where there's a link between the use of baby powder and cancer. I, you know, wood chips are a natural ingredient. I cannot imagine that the cost of using wood chips over something like cement that has to be poured, and maybe I think the cost is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per playground. I don't know. My husband is actually planning on renting a wood chipper from Home Depot when it stops raining, which I think is.
Never.
Safely said, that it's not going to rain for a while. And we have a lot of trees in our yard and we're actually going to use the wood chipper that I think we're renting for two hundred and fifty dollars, three hundred dollars, to actually cover our playground for our kids in wood chips. That's the cost of doing it, the wood chips that we have there. We've had for years. We've actually gotten a lot of wood chips from the town. We've actually called the town and said, hey, we'll take your wood chips. Because a lot of times landscapers of towns, they have trees that have fallen and they don't have a place to put those wood chips. So I would just say, think about possible alternatives. That would save you so much money. Get in touch with the town, bring your wood chips to the playgrounds. So I wouldn't just go by necessarily what is, if you're regulatory compliant, I think we need to go beyond that and sort of just use common sense approaches to situations such as this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David May, ninety-three Owino Road. Congratulations to the new principal. Best of luck in the job. Just wanted to thank you for the cameras on the buses. That was swift. I mean, I think I brought that up a couple of months ago. So thank you so much for looking into that and getting to a final conclusion. Peter, did you ever hear anything from Holly on the, because the state still has to do there?
Not from Holly, but rather from the New Jersey School Board first. They haven't met in committee. They're so busy with their budgets, they haven't talked about it yet. They don't move very quickly.
No, no. All those marijuana people are going. Yeah. And, yeah, I'm just still stunned. Mr. Ruthberg is retired. Both my daughters have him, so ten years apart is a long history. But, thank you.
Thank you.
Please stay.
Hi, Wendy Pransdatter, fifty-eight Fleming Hour Road. I want to thank you guys as well for taking in the consideration for the mulch and removing the tire. I grew up in Suffolk. I can remember when I was in elementary school, they put in a tire playground. And I can remember as a child, the smell and the headaches and the effects that those tires had on me when I was in elementary school. And now my son is in kindergarten at Betsy Ross and my daughter will be starting next year. Last year, I put together the kindergarten playgroups and we went during the summer and spent an hour on the playground and I couldn't breathe. And my son couldn't breathe. And he has allergies and we know that he has tree pollen allergies, but when we left the playground, he was like, Mommy, it's really hard for me to breathe. And now he comes up to me in the spring when they go out on the playground and he asks me in the morning, can you please bring, put a note out so that I don't have to go on the playground today? And I don't have any kind of doctor, I don't have a written, like, a doctor saying that I can do that. And so I don't know what my legal rights are to say you have to stay inside. I don't want him inside because I don't want him, I want him to be able to get fresh air. But fresh air for him right now is sitting on that playground that has tire mulch. And it's really hard for my family. So I just really want you to consider what the other two ladies have said tonight and take it into our own hands, not necessarily what a clinical study or like a scientific study would say. But think about how you feel on a hot spring day or a summer day standing on a bunch of tires. And to think about when you go into a tire, into a tire store to go buy new tires for your car and the smell that you inhale when you go into those tire stores. That's what the kids are on every day when they're playing. So please take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Perinski, fifty-one Malcolm Road. I'm new to this. My daughter will be starting Betsy Ross in kindergarten in the fall. The new security measures in place in the schools, fantastic. Installing the cameras on the school buses, great. I definitely see a lot of people not stopping. All important to the safety of our children, but so is their health and playing on the playground on a safe surface. So please do the right thing and vote for the safe wood chips to replace the rubber mulch. My five-year-old knew I was coming tonight and said, even if they put down small rocks, anything to get rid of the rubber mulch, I don't want cancer. You shouldn't have to worry about things like this. So please do the right thing and save the playgrounds and get rid of that. I've talked to other parents where it stains their clothes, stains everything. If this black soot is getting over all their stuff, how good is it for them to keep breathing it in? So please, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike in Dubois. I'm on eighty-one Youngs Road. I'm also very concerned about the tire mulch. I am actually so concerned that I have not signed my children up for school. My daughter was supposed to start kindergarten and my son, second grade. But I went over on the playground and I had them play there and they came home and they were, their hands were black, they wiped their faces because it was hot, they had black stripes in their face from this. And knowing that this is so unhealthy for the children, I am shocked to see that it's on every single school playground. I can't bring my kids to school. I have not signed them up. I hope you can do something really to help the other children that will be in the Mawa schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have anybody else?
Okay, Evelyn Sock, Bow forty-three, Thunderhead Place. Okay, I'm a practical person and I've shoveled a lot of mulch and shoveled a lot of gravel. And so the cost to do this would be possibly renting some type of a backhoe, fronthoe, whatever those little things are called, you know, those ones with the little scoop. How much does it cost to get the dumpster and actually remove the tire mulch? And then spreading it would, I don't see that it's a huge cost item, except for the possibility of trying to get rid of the tires.
That's what we're doing. Finance and Facilities is checking into all of that. So it's not that we're not thinking of any of those issues. I think all of those issues come into play. And that's what they're doing now. That's why we'll have an answer in June.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I guess, sorry. One thing I forgot to mention is please test the soil before you remove it just to create a.
Baseline.
Baseline. Because the last thing that I would want to see, if in fact what this church was alleging against this company, if in fact that is true, you don't want to have to basically